Today, we're gonna go over the Divine Council and we're gonna break this into two parts because there's a lot. Last week, we talked about Elohim and we talked about the words for deity in the Bible. And we saw that these are category titles and these refer to any beings that exist in the spiritual realm. The biblical authors do however, use this title, this category title in similar ways of how we use proper names. So just as siblings can use the title mom to refer to their particular mom. The biblical authors will often use the word Elohim to refer to Yahweh. They can do this because the biblical texts are written by, to, and for these tight knit religious communities that shared a common understanding of who these words referred to. Uh, the biblical authors do believe that there's only one chief Elohim slash Theos. Who is revealed in the story of Israel scriptures, the Old Testament, and in the life, death, and resurrection of Jesus. That Elohim is named Yahweh in Hebrew Bible and he's called father in the New Testament. The biblical authors do not portray the other spiritual beings as rivals to one another. As creator, as rivals to, to the one creator God. Rather, they exist in a realm that is parallel to the earthly realm where some are loyal to God and others have become rebels. Uh, the homework y'all had was if you were a king or king, what would your royal staff team? What would your royal staff look like?
Thinking I would need accountant to keep the book.
Okay.
I would need um, an organizer to organize official function.
If you were a king or queen, you would, you would need like a military, you would need counsel, you would need people running the money, trade, systems. You would need like ministries of interior. I mean, all kinds of things. Like if you think of our government, you know, there's so many different cabinets and committees and, and elected officials, but of course, you would appoint all those in your kingdom. So when many people think of spiritual beings in the Bible, they usually think of God and angels, Satan and the demons, and these things come to their mind. But the biblical authors, they have a much more nuanced conception of the spiritual realm, which is matched by a wide vocabulary for talking about spiritual things. Now, in our last session, we talked about the words such as Elohim and Theos, which can refer to spiritual beings that are not the one creator God. So who are these other Elohim and what role do they play in the biblical story? Now, the biblical authors believe that heaven and earth are parallel realities. Each are inhabited by creatures that have been delegated with God's blessing to rule and oversee that realm. In heavens, the celestial lights are appointed to rule day and night. So we see this from Genesis one verses fourteen through eighteen. Now, you had that in heavens, right? Celestial rulers, other Elohim ruling on behalf of God. Now on land, you have the humans who are pointed as what? God's image to rule over the land, sea, and the air creatures. And we see this in Genesis one versus twenty-six through thirty. So see that parallelism, right? We got God appointing those other Elohim who are in the heavens. And then you got the humans who are on the earth, right? And it's parallel. And we saw in session one, how the biblical authors saw the world. We saw that model, the, the uh, the dome model. Lastly, these creatures who are ruling on behalf of God are often called the host of heaven and the host of land. So the host of heaven would be the spiritual beings and the host of land would be who? 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 The humans. So this portrait, okay, these three points, this understanding, this portrait of the ordered world is fundamental to us understanding the biblical storyline. And it prepares us for an entire tier of creatures in the spiritual realm that will meet at various points in the Bible. So we're gonna be investigating the Divine Council and this Divine Council goes by many titles. But in every appearance, their role in the heavenly realm is similar. Like the staff team y'all would have in y'all's kingdoms. These creatures, this Divine Council are essentially God's staff team. They are his agents of delegated authority that mirror God's earthly staff team, the humans. These spiritual beings are portrayed as honoring the one who created and rules them. And they're also invited by God to participate in making decisions and carrying them out. So we see in Psalm eighty-nine, a collection of titles referring to the Divine Council. The heavens will praise your wonders Yahweh. Your faithfulness also in the assembly, in the assembly of the holy ones. For who in his skies is comparable to Yahweh? Who among the sons of God is like Yahweh? A God greatly feared in the council of the holy ones and awesome above all those who are around him. Yahweh, God of host, who is like you mighty Yahweh? Your faithfulness also surrounds you. So in the bold underlined words right here, we can see a collection of titles referring to this Divine Council, this council which is ruling on behalf of God. You know, they're, once again, they are not parallel. They are, excuse me, they are not above God. God created them. He gave them authority to rule on behalf of him, but at the same time, you know, he's given them authority, but they still obey God, right? So we see these titles, sons of God, holy ones, council of the holy ones, titles like that. Here are some examples of sons of God. We see Psalm twenty-nine. Sons of God give to Yahweh, give to Yahweh honor and power. Give to Yahweh the honor due to his name, worship Yahweh in the splendor of his holiness. Or look at Job one verses six through, six through seven. Now, one day when the sons of God, the Divine Council, came to present themselves before the Lord, the Satan also came among them. The Lord said to the Satan, from where do you come? Then Satan answered the Lord and said, from roaming around the earth and walking about it. Or look at Job thirty-eight. This is God speaking to Job. Where were you when I laid the foundations of the land? Tell me if you have understanding. Who set its measurements since you know, or who stretched a measuring line over it? When the stars of the morning sang together, the stars of the morning being celestial rulers, and all the sons of God shouted aloud. And once again, we have references to this Divine Council, to these other spiritual beings who are under God. Uh, here's an example of host of heaven. From first Kings twenty-two. My chias said, therefore hear the word of the Lord. I saw the Lord sitting on his throne and all the hosts of heaven standing by him on his right and on his left. And the Lord said, who will entice Ahab to go and fall at Ramoth-Gilead? And one said this while another said that. Then a spirit came forward and stood before the Lord and said, I will entice him. The Lord said to him, how? And he said, I will go and be a deceiving spirit in the mouth of all of his prophets. Then he said, you are to entice him and also prevail. Go and do so. Here's an example of council. Got Jeremiah twenty-three verses eighteen and twenty-three. But who has stood in the council of Yahweh that he should see and hear his word? Who has given heed to his word and listened? I did not send these prophets, but they ran. I did not speak to them, but they prophesized. But if they had stood in my council, then they would have announced my words to my people and would have turned them back from their evil way and from the evil of their deeds. Or look at Psalm eighty-two. God takes his stand in the Divine Council. In the midst of Elohim, he renders justice. Or look at Job fifteen. Were you the first man to be born or were you brought forth before the hills? Have you listened in the Divine Council and do you limit wisdom to yourself? So when we read all of these titles, sons of God, um, host of heaven, Divine Council. When we read all these texts, we hear all these titles, we see this image appear. God is consistently depicted on his heavenly throne and he's surrounded by his staff team who participate in discussing and then carrying out God's plans. So the divine throne room is the place from which Yahweh governs the world with his heavenly council. The place where Yahweh's decrees direct the human community and the divine world is set forth and through whom they are communicated or enacted. This key point right here, this concept of this Divine Council which surrounds God, who participated in discussing and carrying out God's plans. It helps us understand Isaiah six. In the year of King Uzziah's death, remember this is Isaiah, okay, we're in Isaiah six. I saw the Lord sitting on the throne lofty and exalted with the train of his robe filling the temple. Seraphim stood above him. Each having six wings with two, he covered his face and with two, he covered his feet and in two, he's, he flew. And one called out to another and said, holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts. The whole earth is full, is the fullness of his glory. And the foundations of the thresholds trembled at the voice of him who called out while the temple was filling with smoke. Then I heard the voice of the Lord saying, whom shall I send and who will go for us? Then Isaiah said, here I am, send me. So we see Isaiah having a vision of the Divine Throne Room, right? And he sees Yahweh, he sees his God exalted, and he sees Yahweh being surrounded by all these other spiritual beings. Then in verse eight, we hear Yahweh saying, who will represent both himself, whom shall I send? And also the Divine Council, who will go for us?
Um, okay, so are we part of the Divine Council or is that just heavenly beings like?
No, we're, we're on the earth. We're God's image on the earth.
Humans.
Yeah, we're the humans.
Right, right. So we're just sons of God and not considered?
No, we're not sons. We're not sons. That's like another word for saying like spiritual beings. That's, we're talking about Divine Council, other Elohim, there's other titles, the Divine Council, the uh, host of heaven, the, what's another one? The star, was it the stars in the sky? You know, it, we understand that there are other Elohim, other spiritual beings which God created. However, they're ruling on behalf of him in, in positions, right?
Right. I think I was just confused because sons of God, I thought that was us.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and we're gonna investigate sons of God in a little bit more nuanced way because there is a lot of, not baggage, but there's a lot of context you need to understand. Now, we are all children of God. Don't get me wrong on that. But we can also see, you know, we can look at with Jesus, you know, he is the son of God and stuff like that. But once again, that's a little bit more nuanced. We'd really have to go into it. But there's this a lot of terminology that is referring to Elohim, to spiritual beings that the biblical authors use. So we'll go into it a little bit more deeper. As Katie would say, she would use my line, we'll get there. No, 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 we're the humans. We are, what were we tasked with in the Garden of Eden, Sarah? Or we tasked with, what was our order from God?
Take care of the land?
Yeah, so, yeah, that, we were to be stewards of the garden, but we were to be fruitful.
Multiply.
Yeah, so once again, we got the spiritual beings, right? Ruling in the heavens. And then we got the humans who are ruling on behalf of God on the earth, but we're all ruling on behalf of God, right? But we're not, we are not spiritual beings. We're not Elohim. No, okay, no, we're humans.
Okay.
Yeah. In all these texts, we have a, we're going back to the text of the Divine Council, the host of heaven, all those references, you know, like in Job, what have you. In all these texts, we have a positive portrayal of a council doing their job. They're doing the ideal role that they've been given. And you gotta notice, once again, that this parallel to the human realm, you know, what's happening for the spiritual beings who are ruling on behalf of God, it's also happening on earth for God's stewards, you know, the humans. Now, God's representatives, they honor their creator and king and they carry out his purposes in heaven and in earth. But in our Bible, right, we have a lot of conflict. We have a lot of plot conflicts about rebellions which are against God in both the heavenly and the earthly realms. And there are three significant waves to rebellion explored in Genesis, explored in the first eleven chapters of Genesis. So here are the heavenly and earthly rebellions from Genesis. We have, of course, Satan, the Haasitan, the snake, a rebel Divine Council member who lures God's images, the humans into rebellion. That's Genesis two through four. In Genesis six, we have more Divine Council members rebel and they try to restore eternal life to humans by impregnating women. We have the strange story of the Nephilim. And in Genesis ten through eleven, we have even more Divine Council members rebelling and luring the Bab- the, the empire of Babylon into rebellion, giving birth to the scattered nations to rebel, who worship idol gods. So there's three sets of rebellions, okay? Some with spiritual beings, with some of the Divine Council members who, who were serving God and now doing their own thing. And we also have the rebellion of the humans, you know, from the snake and what have you. Now, we're gonna look at the third rebellion first, okay? So yes, um, whoever said Noah with uh, the Tower of Babel, you are right. We're gonna look at their Noah's kin, okay? So after Noah's sons and their wives get off the ark, we're told that they divide and they go on their own ways, each becoming um, a network of people groups that develop their own language. And we see this in Genesis ten, uh, the, for the whole, for most of the chapter, we have, these are the generations of the sons of Noah. Shem, Ham, and Jephthah. Sons were born to them after the flood, flood, the sons of Jephthah, and it names the sons of Jephthah, right? And then for these, the coastal uh, peoples spread their lands, each with their own language by their clans and their languages. The sons of Ham were, and it, it names, names. These are the sons of Ham by their clans, their languages, their lands, and their nations. To Shem also the father of all children of Eber, the older brother of Jephthah, children were born, the shun, the sons of Shem were, and it continues onward. And then to Eber were born two sons. The name of one was Peleg, for in his days, the land was divided. So his name is signifying a time where the land was divided and his brother's name was Jokten. These are the sons of Shem by their clans, their languages, their lands, and their nations. So once again, we see after the flood, we see Noah's descendants, right, scattering across the world, having their own languages and being divided among people groups. That's what we have from Genesis ten. Now, when we look at Genesis ten, the three sons of Noah are listed with their kin. And they make up seventy nations in this list. If you count them all, there's seventy. But you notice that each list, you know, the sons of Ham, the sons of Shem, the sons of Jephthah. At the end of each list, you have this phrase, you have this phrase saying, each with their own language. And you see this in verses five, twenty, and thirty-one. So this story assumes, in Genesis ten, it already assumes that the nations are already divided up in their own languages. Okay? But this story hasn't been told yet because we don't find out why they divide until the next chapter in Genesis eleven. So when, when I was telling you how in Genesis, things aren't always chronological. In our modern eyes, when we read a book from beginning to end, we assume, you know, it's chronological, you know, a beginning, a middle, and an end. But sometimes in scripture, the author, such as Moses, is writing this to emphasize a point. You know, things might not always be chronological because he's trying to emphasize something right here. So the division of the descendants of Noah is connected to an obscure comment in ten twenty-five, Genesis ten twenty-five. That in the days of Peleg, the land was divided also. So whatever happened, whatever it was that separated the nations into having different languages, is called a division in this passage. You know, they divide. They don't have the same language, right? They have a division. They have their own language. This division happens in the days of Peleg, which is a Hebrew word meaning division too. So the reader is wondering, why are these people divided? Why do they have, why is the land divided? Why does everyone have their own language when it hasn't been told yet? And we see this in Genesis eleven, which is what happens. The scattering and the division of nations. So we can see how Moses wants to emphasize the rebellion of Babylon, the Tower of Babel, that, that Sunday School story that we had, that we all know. So remember that before the Tower of Babel, everyone had their all, everyone had the same language. So we see now, the whole land used the same language and the same words. It came about as they journeyed east. This is Genesis eleven. They found a plane in the land of Shinar and settled there. And then they said to one another, come, let us make bricks and burn them thoroughly. And they used brick for stone and they used tar for mortar. Then they said, come, let us build for ourselves a city, a tower whose top will reach into the heavens. And let us make our name for ourselves, otherwise we will be scattered abroad over the face of the whole earth. Well, that's some foreshadowing in it. And then the Lord came down, right? So he came down to see the city in a tower which the sons of men had built. And the Lord said, behold, they are one people and they have the same language. And this is what they began to do, and now nothing which they purpose to do will be impossible for them. Come, let us go down and there and confuse their language so that they will not understand each other's speech. So the Lord scattered them abroad from there over the face of the whole earth and they stopped building a city. Therefore, its name is called Babel because there the Lord confused the language of the whole earth. And from there, the Lord scattered them abroad over the face of the whole earth. So we see that in Genesis eleven, it explains why in Genesis ten, everyone was scattered and everyone had their own language and everyone had their own land. All because what? They were trying to build a tower, something that rivaled God. You know, they were trying to, that's what they're trying to do. They were trying to become gods. And that's not what humanity is meant to do, right? We're supposed to serve the one God, our God.
So the us that they mentioned are these heavenly beings and and the three in one.
The, the Divine, so God and the Divine Council. Yeah, come, let us go down and see what they're up to because God would ask his council, just as a king or a queen, ask um, others, you know, what do y'all think we should do? You know, the advisors and counselors, let's go see what's up. And then what, what, what happens at the end of the day? God makes the decision. He scatters them abroad. That's what he decides to do. But yeah, we see this, this image of the Divine Council coming down with God to see what's going on. So God and his heavenly staff team.
Pastor?
Yes.
Do you remember, uh, no, you probably aren't old enough to remember, but back uh, fifties and sixties, there was another movement to get a common language, Esperanza. And it always intrigued me that that just sort of fell by the wayside. Like God said, no, not gonna do it this time.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I mean, what, what was the sin of those at Babel? They were building what? A tower, right, that goes into the heavens. They were trying to be God. And then God used the language to confuse them, but is, I don't think it's the language itself that's evil. It's what, you know?
But it is a tool, I think, of their working together to that goal of elevating themselves to godhood.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. And it just always tickled me that that kinda went poof.
It would be nice to have one language. I mean, we, we sort of have it, you know, English is the dominant language. Let's see, what, two or three hundred years ago, it was more French, right? That was the lingua franca. And then before that, what, it was Latin, right? And then I don't know what it was before that, but you know, you always have kind of a lingua franca um, that kinda dominates the world from time to time. But, but that is interesting. When we look at Genesis eleven, we notice how after being exiled from Eden, humanity, we're actually going back a little bit. When humanity has just been exiled from the garden, okay? Adam and Eve. So after being exiled from Eden, humanity is forced to go east, right? Genesis three twenty-four. And so also Cain was exiled further east after he killed Abel. That's Genesis four sixteen. So to your, so too here, after surviving the flood, humanity journeys east. Okay? And they do the opposite of what God tells Noah after the flood. What was the commandment? We asked this earlier. Genesis nine is what? What did God tell Noah and them? What, what did God tell Adam and Eve? What did God tell Noah? Be fruitful and multiply and fill the land. So instead of spreading out and filling the land, Noah's descendants, what do they do? They do the opposite. They come together to not only build this tower to rival God, but to avoid dispersing, to avoid filling the earth and multiplying. So the city and tower that they're building, it's not this average building project. The, the ancient Israelites, when they were hearing this story, they knew exactly what Babylon towers looked like. They knew what they were about. They were ziggurat temples and these were symbolic buildings designed to be man-made cosmic mountains. They were trying to build temples where the divine and the human realms overlapped. Remember, a few studies back, we talked about how when you had Adam and Eve in the garden before they, they fell, right? You had the overlapping of the heavens and the earth and this overlap was in the Garden of Eden, right? Which was described as a cosmic mountain. Okay, so the humans in the Tower of Babel, they're trying to build this temple which mimics being a place where the heavens and the earth overlap. And that's not what they're supposed to do. They're trying, the Tower of Babel is representing a human attempt to reverse humanity's exile from Eden. They're trying to go back to a time where heaven and earth overlapped. So Babylon is an anti Eden where humans tried to ascend to the skies and assert themselves over God's wisdom and his authority. So this is why God scatters them. He wants them to do what? To be fruitful, multiply, and fill the land. So he does that by scattering them. Resulting in diverse languages and seventy scattered nations of Genesis ten. And this story is clearly focused on the human actors in this story. But the drama of Babylon's rebellion does not end quite here. Okay, so this is gonna be our last few points before we conclude for today. Moses, in Deuteronomy, Moses thinks back to the scattering of Babel, of Babylon. And he sees it not only as a physical story where humans built this, they tried to, you know, ascend to be like God, all that. But Moses also sees it, a spiritual side, a spiritual rebelling alongside with it. And we see this in Deuteronomy four verses sixteen through twenty, and now listen to it. This is Moses talking to the Israelites. Don't act corruptly and make an image for yourselves in the form of any figure. And don't lift up your eyes to heaven and see the moon, the sun, and the moon, and the stars, and all the hosts of heaven, all the spiritual beings, and be drawn away and worship and ser- worship them and serve them. Those which the Lord, your God, has allotted to all the peoples under the whole heaven. But the Lord has taken you to be a people for his own position, possession as today. So this is kind of interesting. We'll digest this for a moment. Let's go ahead and read Deuteronomy thirty-two verses eight through nine. Remember the days of the old, consider the years of all generations. Ask your father and he will inform you, your elders and they will tell you. When the Most High, When the Most High, Yahweh, allotted the nations. And set the divisions for the sons of humanity, he fixed the territories of people, peoples. According to the number of sons of God, sons of Elohim. But for Yahweh's portion is his people, Jacob, his own allotment. So this is kind of interesting. One might look at these passages. And see that maybe after the rebellion, after the division, that God appointed other spiritual beings. Over other nations. That's kind of interesting. Or we also see. But Yahweh's portion is for his people, and who are his people? The Israelites. So you, the different interpretation. Think about that while we move on. Yeah, yeah, just digest it. It's okay. This is, this is very controversial when I'm presenting, so. This is, uh, when we had our first study, Eloise, this is where I got really hammered on. People were like, no, no. And I'm like, okay. So in Deuteronomy, yeah.
I just meant, I can't think about it while you're moving on.
Oh, I know, but see, the thing is, I just want you to munch on it. We're not gonna totally figure it out right now. Okay, I'm, I'm pulling an inception from that movie. I'm planting like a little, little idea. Anyway. In Deuteronomy four, remember what's Deuteronomy four? Remember Moses's warning, you know? Don't worship other, other gods, other Elohim, worship your God, okay? For the Lord, you know, he's, we are his portion, okay? In Deuteronomy four, Moses warns the Israelites who are going into the land of Canaan. That the nations around them worship animal gods. They worship other Elohim. Excuse me, they worship animal gods as well as the host of heaven. We see this in Deuteronomy four sixteen, right? Don't worship, what is it? The sun and the moon and the stars, and all the hosts of heaven. Who are the hosts of heaven? Other Elohim. Those who rebelled, who were thrown out. See? You see? So, and then notice, notice what Moses says. God has allotted these spiritual beings to the nations. So the nations worship and serve them, not Yahweh. But in contrast to the nations is Israel, whom Yahweh redeemed in the Exodus story. So this raises the question, when did the nations get handed over to spiritual beings? So that they would worship them? Welcome to Deuteronomy thirty-two, which is the second portion right here. So in Deuteronomy thirty-two, Moses recalls an event from the distant past when Yahweh allotted the nations. So this is a reference to Genesis ten and eleven, the list of the seventy nations and the scattering of Babylon. But Moses says that this is when Yahweh allotted the seventy nations according to the number of the sons of God. While he kept Israel for himself in his own portion. So look at it right here, just, I mean, Deuteronomy thirty-two. Look at the fifth, fifth sentence. When the Most High, when Yahweh allotted the nations and set the divisions for the sons of humanity, he fixed the territories of peoples. According to the number of sons of God, sons of Elohim. For Yahweh's portion is his people, Jacob, is his own allotment. So could it be that when humanity rebelled? And that when the spiritual beings rebelled, of course, we have that in several situations. That God gave over humanity to be ruled by the following spiritual beings. But God rescued Israel. And if we think about it like this, this would make a lot more sense for Abraham, right? What did God say he would do through Abraham? I wa- I will make you into what? A great nation, right? And your, your descendants will be what?
Like the spans of the earth.
See, so y'all will be able to, y'all will be fruitful, y'all will multiply. And then what is the last line that we always forget? And through y'all, I will bless all the other nations. So through Israel, God's own portion, he would redeem everyone else who serves other Elohim, they're not Yahweh. Provides more context. It's a unique interpretation. And I will tell y'all too, this is controversial, okay? Um, depending on the translation, there are two readings. You have sons of Elohim. And you also have, there's another reading, another translation is sons of Adam. Okay? Sons of Adam? Or sons of Elohim? So depending on how you read it, but if we read it as sons of God. It provides a different interpretation for the whole thing. So Deuteronomy four and thirty-two invite us to link these two stories together, you know, Genesis ten and eleven. And to view the rebellion and the scattering of Babylon as a joint human and spiritual rebellion. So humans wanted to build their own fake Eden mountain where they'd have access to eternal life, make everything right. But now we learn, if we look at Deuteronomy thirty-two, and we see it as sons of God. We can also see that there were other spiritual beings who also rebelled. And who are now being worshipped by the nations. So this portrait, this scattering of nations of serving other gods, of other Elohim and rebel spiritual beings. Is introduced here in Deuteronomy four and then thirty-two. And will form the basis for a whole network of passages in the prophets and the prophetic texts, likes like Israel, Isaiah, Ezekiel, Jeremiah. And also in the Psalms that will develop these ideas further. So does anyone have any questions before we have our homework and our conclusion for tonight? Anyone at all? No questions, no observations. Anyone disagree with me?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if, if God gave us, um, or. What are we looking for? Split us up and, and let rulers rule over us? What, what does that mean?
Well, it's, it's, he's giving us what we wanted.
Right?
Yeah.
All the havoc, I mean, uh, and these are the spiritual beings that rebelled against God, so they're down here, right?
Yeah, but we did too.
Right, right. So they're ruling over us. So is like, they responsible for bad and good, or?
Yeah, maybe they're the ones who are causing all the, that's kind of like with Jesus, right? When Jesus was walking around, and he was saying that there are authorities who are going against he and his father, right?
Right.
He wasn't talking about the human principalities or the authorities. He was talking about. The other authorities, the fallen spiritual beings, those who are behind the scenes, those who are causing mischief and mayhem. Now, do humans still do evil? Well, of course. But what if there are other beings who are behind the scenes, kind of, you know, like Satan, right? We attribute him as the primary one. But when we read in scripture, we also know that there are other beings too. So we have what? Satan and the demons. Right? So they're, you know, they're behind the scenes, so that makes a lot of sense.
Are they all working with Satan?
I would assume so, yeah, cuz he's the, he's the, you know, leader, right? Yeah.
Okay, I have a question about that too. Are, you know, Satan was cast out of heaven and he took, I think, a quarter of the angels with him.
It's like a quarter or a third or so, yeah, but that's.
And so are these the fallen angels that are ruling?
Well, or, but see, see the whole angel thing, like, we have a conception of what an angel is. And we'll get to it, but simply put, angels are simply messengers.
Right, right, I know that.
Technically, if you go old school, they're also considered in the same category, spiritual things, Elohim.
Okay, okay.
But you know, we had, yeah. It could be, yeah, it could be, but it would make a lot of sense. While you would have like Egypt, you know? Like, okay, remember Egypt with Israelites were enslaved? Remember the plagues? Okay, remember in Sunday School, you've, I bet you've heard this in Sunday School and in sermons, okay? You've always heard, well, when God did the plagues, he was making fun of an Egyptian god, right? Remember when there was darkness over the land, right? What's the sun god in, in Egyptian religion? What, what'd you say?
Ra.
Ra, right, Ra. So Yahweh is making fun of another Elohim that's ruling over Egypt. By saying, okay, look, I can blot out the sun and you're powerless. The whole point of this study. Is to present in a different interpretation for y'all to think about. But it's just a very interesting interpretation, because if we see it like this. A lot of the times when God shows his power over other nations and other. Um, situations, he is asserting who he is, he's showing who he is to all the nations, right? In order to what? To unite them, to bring them back under him and to restore everything. To make everything right, to put these spiritual rebels back in their place. And we know the end of the story. We know what will happen with Jesus coming back in final victory, you know, hell and all that stuff. But it's just a very interesting proposition, you know? And once again, you know, not everyone agrees with this interpretation, depending on which, um, reading you read of Deuteronomy thirty-two. It changes the whole thing. So that's just something you have to be aware of.
But doesn't, does Adam mean man?
Yeah.
Yeah, sons of man, yeah. Yeah, so we go to it, according to the number of sons of Adam. Seventy nations. But if we read it as sons of Elohim, there were seventy Elohim who were appointed over the seventy nations. So it's just, it depends on how you read it, depends on which reading you take. Here's your homework. Read Isaiah fourteen, verses eleven through fifteen. Now, look it up, read the passages, and answer, who is Isaiah referring to in these passages? All right, well, that concludes our study for tonight. Hopefully I didn't confuse you all too much. And once again, the whole goal of this study is to just ponder, ask questions, and just dive deep into scripture. But I just wanna thank y'all, and, uh, I guess we'll catch y'all later, okay?